All right, we'll call our March 20th council meeting to order. The town of Culhars is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. We'll move into the adoption of the agenda. So I'm just going to make a motion that the agenda be amended by adding one item to the closed meeting agenda regarding personal matters in accordance with Section 24 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, advice from officials. I will call question, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you. We'll move on now to the adoption of the previous minutes. Looking to council to see if there are any revisions or if everyone's all good with that. All good? Excellent, thank you. And we'll move right into our staff reports. So the first thing we have in front of us is the administration report. I will go to council to see if there are any questions. There's none? Thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Excellent! With that then, we will move on to organics. So this was something that did come to us in, it was in January of, yes, January? Back in, I guess, August and in January. So we brought this forward again today to consider if there's anything that we would like to do within this area. So again, I'm going to ask council if there's any questions on the material that's been presented.
Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the reports and the information included. Just a question to the mayor to administration. How soon could a centralized waste site be developed, a drop-off site be developed?
Thank you for the question. I guess we could do it in fairly short order would be the question.
Right.
Where we would locate it.
Right.
So we're going to take some thought and picking the right location and setting it up. A drop-off bin we're talking is, I've talked to a couple of companies that can offer the service. Basically, they drop the bin off, we'd have to sign it properly, do a communication strategy for our residents, and just have it empty when full.
Okay.
And there'd be two options to go with. We could go with either just yard waste, grass clippings, small tree branches, I think it's up to one inch, or we could go with full food waste, everything. But we would have to follow the guidelines laid out by the city because that's most likely there, or Tabor is where the waste would go. So we have to follow what they accept. So we would have to start with the advertised amount.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, just one more question. Just when you were talking about location, I know last time, if we had brought this up in January, we were kind of saying like, or I had said, why can't we do it all? But the fire department lot is meant to be owned. Like, is it possible to just like put more there where the recycling already is and just take more of that lot? Or is that not something that would be potentially possible?
That's a possibility in consultation with the fire chief on how much more of their land we can take. But moving fences is pretty simple. That could be an option.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
We hear there's some recommended actions coming out of this. And I don't see draft motions up there. But I would, I do have, I guess, an idea of the direction I would like to go. That's something I could entertain.
Yeah, of course. Let's just see if there's any other questions on the material first. I'm sorry, did you ask about if there's any recommendations provided from administration? Was that the question?
The question, I guess, was to us.
Okay.
As there's recommendations.
Yes.
Listed here, but no draft.
Yeah.
Motion, I guess. Would it be possible to entertain a motion?
Absolutely.
That's my question.
Of course, of course. Do you have a motion prepared? Or would you like to take a couple of minutes to get that together?
I don't have it, I don't have it worded exactly, but I was just, I would be curious. Yeah, I...
What are those thoughts?
Yeah, I guess what are those thoughts are, so.
Sure.
My thoughts were, I think it would be good to explore the costs and feasibility of a central yard waste drop-off and the possibility of a compost bin rebate. That's what I would like to explore.
Great.
But if one or two of those are, you know, should split them out, or they go together or not, I think there's division about what we should explore. That's what I'd like to hear.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think that those are really great options. And when we look through them, particularly hearing what our direct operations is indicating, about a central drop-off location, they seem to me that they might be sort of the simplest and might be greater buy-in to provide those two options for people. And if they're alone with a good solid education, as you say, Kevin, that communication strategy attached to them.
I do just want to ask one question to administration. There was a proposed action on here to provide an RFD with the recommended approach based on current operational capacities and limitations. Would this fall within what you would say you're, like, and you may not have all the information in front of you obviously, but would this fall within the capacity that we currently have?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, if I might, you were indicating the options that we were requesting, one and three.
I was, yes, I was wondering about those ones, just because it was written, other than about that capacity.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Potry, would you like to make a formal motion for this? Like, there is one that has been drafted?
Yeah, yeah, that looks good so far. That administration explore the costs and feasibility of the central organic drop-off site and backyard, or it's backyard, whatever, probably better, compost bin rebate program.
May I request a friendly minute that we include an educational component with that? It is, it is in the RFD that...
Yes, yeah, and an education. That's right. What does it say there? And, yeah, including an educational program. For residents.
Would that be number two regarding food waste, backyard composting?
Yes. Yeah, it's kind of two and three, right? Because three has education and composting, right? So, of course, two is just composting, so.
If I may, I think it's really difficult to have just the backyard composting alone without good education. It sends, it traps a lot of government people's yards.
Okay, so I'm just looking at the motion here to see if there are any questions on the motion or if it is clear as it is written. Questions on the motion? Yeah, just going. Thank you.
Just a question on the motion, because I agree that we would potentially want to look into these things, but based on the RFD and how it's written, I believe that number six, options for councils, so there'd be there, direct administration to provide council with an RFD, administration's recommended approach based on operational capabilities and limitations with probably better encompass than specifically to like a centralized organic drop-off site. So I guess, because this is kind of limiting what potentially might be brought forward, whereas if we just asked for an RFD with what could be done, we could further debate it at that time. I guess, would you be open to considering that change?
Yeah, I understand the question, and I think that, you know, we're tasked with giving directions, specific directions, so even this is open to cost and feasibility. So it's, you know, it could be more specific even than that, I think, but, or less, but, you know, we already, we have quite enough information here already, so if we know what we want, then why not just move forward, I guess? Or maybe there's more research to be done. I guess, I guess I'm open to more research to be done, but I just, I don't know. I feel like we have some good information here already, so, but I, yeah.
So just to clarify, would you like to keep the motion as is, or would you like to change it?
Yeah, I'm open to changing it, I guess, but I just, I don't like leaving it so open, I guess. I would like to provide some direction about the two things that I think are reasonable for our community. So if it's, you know, it could be, it could be B, include, you know, and then adding in a focus on organics and compost bin rebate, something to that.
So basically, from what I'm gathering, you want to keep it with the three items that are associated with that? You don't want it open?
Well, it could be, it could be opened a little bit more if there's something else that's discovered, you know, along the way. I'm open, I have no problem with that, but I just, I think if we just leave it completely open the way it's written, with B is that, you know, it could be, could be anything, that's what it, B could be anything. Like, we're not giving any directions, how I, how I read that, what is the direction? We'll go back and give us direction, so. That's why I just think it would be nicer to have some directions to test the programs that we think residents would find viable, so.
All right, I saw the counsel approach and set us up, and then we'll go to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. My thoughts are to kind of go with options for council number B, but include these two as points that we'd like to see included in that report. Because I mean, if you bring those in, but we still would be open for administration's recommendations. So we're not missing something that could be there, but we're still providing the focus on options that we want to see involved.
Okay, go ahead.
And thank you. Just for clarity, so the compost would be food waste and grass clippings and yard waste?
I think that's the part that I would...
Okay.
Just for clarity. Let us administration evaluate.
So might I suggest that we just like take a quick recess here, just so that we can kind of wordsmith this to meet, to meet the needs of, because there's a lot of questions about this? If everybody's okay with that? We take about five minutes to just kind of work on that? Okay? So we'll just have a quick recess here. Yep. All right, perfect. All right, Counselor Potry, would you like to make your motion?
Yeah, I move that administration provide council with an RFD of administration's recommended approach based on current operational capabilities and limitations considering a central organics drop-off site and compost bin rebate program, as well as an educational program for residents.
Great, thank you. I will see if there are any questions on the motion as it is written. Yeah, if not, I will just read that back. So it's been moved by Counselor Potry that administration provides council with an RFD of administration's recommended approach based on current operational capabilities and limitations considering a central organics drop-off site and compost bin rebate program, as well as an educational program for residents. Would you like to speak to your motion at all?
Yes, I think we have, Culhars, we only have, so we have, you know, curbside, curbside waste, and we have bins for drop-off recyclables, but we don't have a permanent place to have organics in our community. I think organics are an important part of the waste that comes from our community, and we should consider ways in which we can manage that waste better. Administration has advised previously, they can see the numbers of weight that gets taken to the dump during the summer, which is most often grass clippings or other organics that may not need to go to the dump. So having an option for our residents to help reduce our avoid operations costs makes a lot of sense, and it gives residents an option to help produce their, I guess, want to call it like environment improvement, yes, so.
Great, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I would support this as well. I think that, again, the primary objective would be to reduce the volume of both yard kitchen waste being sent to the landfill and ultimately lowering the tipping fees. I also support the education and awareness about the yard kitchen waste being sent to the landfill and, again, ultimately having lots of an impact on the environment. I do believe that the centralized drop-off system seems to offer the most sensible approach for where we're at for right now. While I don't think that, again, we're talking about the costs from $6,500 to $10,000 in the report, like, I don't believe that will achieve 100% diversion. I still think that it would hopefully be enough of a decrease to see a decrease in the cost or budget, as well, it aligns with our strategic priorities of land stewardship, environmental responsibility, and the value of sustainability. And then just briefly, as we talked about last meeting with the provincially regulated EPR program and the blue cards thing that's going out October 26, that will, hopefully with luck, without a reduced cost and staff time as well. So, like, what I think is, this is really cool and really timely to be discussing right now, and we're kind of looking at it as a bigger picture. Like, yes, we're looking at organics, but really, it's kind of a strategic thing and looking at best practice of some waste management. And so, again, I'm happy to see this motion about the recommended approach because I think that, based on the information in the report and what we've been hearing, that administration is well placed to bring back the information needed and know what we can do within our capabilities and limitations.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this?
I think, I think, a thank you for the amount of work that went into this. There's an incredible number of options that were made available, and I really appreciate that. I do support the motion as it stands. I really appreciate the opportunity to give our residents choice. If they choose to invest money to purchase a compost bin for their yard, they can work with that. If they choose to not invest those kinds of funds, they're able to use our central organics drop-off site if in fact we're able to move forward with this motion. I think that it is, it appears to be the most sort of easily workable and viable cost-effective solution at this time, so thank you.
Thank you. I think for myself, I think everybody's really summed it up, but I'm happy to support this motion. I think that this is great that we're going down this path and looking more at that sustainability component that we've talked a lot about, and I'm happy to see some traction in this area as well. Anyone else? If not, would you like to close it up? Great. So I'll re-motion again. So it's been by Counselor Potry that administration provides council with an RFD of administration's recommended approach based on the current operational capabilities and limitations considering a central organics drop-off site and a compost bin rebate program, as well as an educational program for residents. I'll call the question, all those in favor? Motion is through. We'll now move on to the Miners Park campground and Army Center dump item. And so this was brought to us a couple of weeks ago. And so we brought it back to see, at that point, how we received this for information and wanted to come back and see if there were any actions that anybody would like to take with this. So first of all, I will again open it up for questions based on the material for council. Yes, go ahead.
I was curious, so there's, of course, a lot of concerns that were raised with this, with the park. I am curious, has there been any, I've never used a campground, of course, I don't need to camp here, but... So I, maybe I should know more about this, but are the bathrooms have unlimited access through the day? I guess, or is there a key, like, key code that you have to put in, or?
No, currently, they're open, they're open all the time during the camping season. Yeah. But there are two sets of bathrooms at the park, so.
Yeah, the ones by the diamonds and then online.
Yeah. Those ones typically aren't open unless there's an event, except for soccer season, because it's too early to have the main bathrooms open. The one close to Second Street is heated, so we open that up for soccer season early in the year.
Okay. And do we see the same kind of, I guess, I don't know, you would call it mess at the, the one that's less open, let's say, the one by the soccer field?
No, no, because it is only open during events outside of soccer season.
Okay. And then, and then I had another question about the booking system. Has administration ever looked into an online booking system with like a key code access or something like that to the playground, to the campground?
We are looking at a booking system now. I'm not sure if it can encompass campgrounds, I haven't been involved with that.
Yeah, the booking system would be able to create a space that can be booked, but if we go and look into the option where we provide key code or there's gate access, then we'd have to sort out what that looks like at that point in time. But I don't think there's any one system that would correlate the booking with the key code, but we might be able to generate an automated response or something like that if we do book that, right?
Okay.
Certainly something we could explore, just don't, we don't know at this time.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm just curious what works been done already to try and address some of these concerns, that's all, so.
Are there questions from council?
On the material before us?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So I did look at the costs associated with the operations of the campsite, as well as revenue generated. And I also see the number of hours from different departments that go into that. The costs associated to operating, do they include all of those additional hours? Or who did the breakdown on that one?
Well, we have the revenue, which you can see.
Yes.
And I should point out again that that revenue, we don't track it as individual campers that come in on their own, traveling through, and people that book the entire campsite for a wedding when they have the social arena. So that encompasses both of those.
Okay.
If it stays open this year, I want to track that a little bit better. So we would still have the revenue if it was opposed to the general public and only open for special events, there still would be revenue from that, so.
Can I ask that, when, I guess, would it be Sarah, would it be our finance person who did up this, these mails for us? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is the operation cost include all of the additional hours that have been put into it to provide sort of some of the enforcement? Okay, so it does include everything?
Yes, it does, yes.
So just to clarify, including staffing hours as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I do believe that's...
Our peace officer, public works.
Peace officer, the corporate services team, the public works team as well.
That's a lot of teams, we all do, yeah.
Yes.
Can I just ask a question about, based off of the information and what you found, what is the recommendation from administration based off of everything? Ultimately, I guess, I'm curious, what do you think should happen with this site?
Looking at it from an economical standpoint, it costs us a lot more to operate it than we make in revenue, so it is offset cost by taxpayers. And time, I think the peace officer was a number of files as well. That's not every year, but it seems to be getting worse. I personally think that it's a great value for the community when somebody rents the social area or something to use it and having our residents use it for things like that, or scouts or cubs want to do a campout, something like that. But I honestly think that the odd person that's coming through, I don't know if it benefits the town except for the cost that we have to put into it, so that's, you know, be more ideal with that.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. Other questions on the material? I'll go to Counselor Akbers, then I'll go to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, just a quick question for administration. The revenue for the campground is listed at about $8,700. Is that typically events that's creating the majority of that funding, or is that general camp? Do we have any idea of kind of what the support is?
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't break that down. We charge the $20 a night for the 14 stalls times two if somebody books it for the weekend, so that would be $600 for a weekend, so, and I think it was booked four times last year for an event for the weekend.
That is such a good value.
Is that the regular rate, $20?
Yeah.
So it's not discounted?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Last thing, we had talked about contracting out Miners Park or potentially selling it. Regarding that conversation, I just wondered if you had any time to consider that? And then if I could ask a few potentially hypothetical questions about that?
About having somebody rent a...
Yeah, about contracting out, or, yeah.
I, honestly, I wouldn't know where to start with that. Who would we contact, how that would look? So I haven't put a lot of thought into it. It would be something we could look at. But I honestly don't know where we can start with that, what another administration would. For the revenues that it's creating, I don't know if there'd be, maybe there's somebody that would take on, similar to what they do in Park Lake where there's a resident camper that stays there all summer and maintains it and looks after it. Again, we could still end up with them calling us for the same kinds of issues of non-payment and enforcement for these kind of things.
And, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, just a few more questions. And just for the, I ran into you earlier, but I just wanted to ask these again. But could the sunny dump be moved closer to the campground and not onto 45th? Like, so could it be moved somewhere in the park? And I know you've talked about that direct access into the sewer line, but if it's potentially moved closer to the campground, would it make it more feasible for one, for safety? So people aren't going through the park? But for two, it might make it more like that someone would want to contract it out?
It's possible, the traders still do have to turn around, and we do have that turnaround by the social area. But if the social area is booked and there's cars parked there, it's very difficult with the trader for turning there. Again, it's something we could look at, we probably, because it is just a tank, it can be moved for the cost of the tank and excavation and moving it. So, yeah, potentially it could be moved. The other thing to consider is, it's typically not bad for smell, except for when we're pumping it out. So when we have the evac trucks that are pumping it out, it is quite smelly, so we want to just make sure it's in a location that's not going to adversely affect the people in the area.
Yeah.
But it's something we could look at, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, do another question?
Yeah, just one more question, and then just more to that point, too. Because one of the issues here is the cost and, you know, the operational concerns, but the other issue is safety through the campground, right? And so on that same train, like, could the loop then be rerouted to not go all the way through Miners Park for, again, addressing those safety concerns?
Yeah, we would have to look at how we can do that, because there does need to be room for, like, the fifth rail trailer or something to turn around. Currently, with what we have there now, without taking up some room where the toboggan hill is, I mean, that could potentially be a solution, but it would negate the use of the toboggan hill.
Dunked. Good thinking. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the thorough report. You indicated that there was also a concern with the dumping site that it sort of brings the traders into conflict with, you know, potentially kids running around.
Yes.
Right, if there's games or the playground or whatever else, have you? Did you have an idea along 45th where that might not? I mean, I guess, I know... I mean, I I guess, I know that it was proposed in our original design along Forty Fifth there. But concerned, would would that not be the same concern then, it potentially brings those trailers into conflict? Or did you have a different location along Forty Fifth?
I hadn't put a lot of thought into it, to be honest. Um, but Forty Fifth is ideal or in the wetland area because we do have it set up here. We can tie it directly into what it would look like depending on the amenities. And again, this would fall back to our wetlands committee as to encompassing somehow within the structure.
I wonder, because is there a possibility to explore a different site that might be on the sewage line?
Yeah, that would give something that we can look around. I have thought of it in the past, and really, we we have nothing down by the public workshop and fire hall in that area. Um, in residential areas, of course, we don't want to put it. Um, so so I can't think of anywhere else off the top of my head that that would work for directly tying it into sewer that wouldn't be near residential.
Yeah, okay.
Not to say that there isn't somewhere I can put some more thought into that.
Thanks, it's just always a concern. I know that I brought that up years ago, is when, after a long weekend when kids are all down at the playground riding their bikes. These trailers are driving through, right?
Yeah.
All right, we do have some potential motions here. If there's if there's no further questions, um, if people would like to move ahead with that? Yes?
Given all the information that we have in front of us and seeing that there has been um conversation at past meetings, I would be prepared at this time to put forward a motion. Um, that we um sort of maintain that campsite for this year and track the revenue generated with group events versus individual camping. Um, with the thought that we would perhaps close it to the general public and look at just for events. If in fact we find that the revenue is sufficient, booking it to events.
Okay, so just just to clarify then, um, you're saying that you would like to keep it as is for this year so any individual can can rent?
Well, it's it's difficult to make a decision to close the campground to the to the public just for events if we don't have that clear information tracked as to who's renting it. If we break out, if we break out the RV site, the the dump and we and the campground, the campground does generate a little more income than operation costs, that's why I asked if everything was built into it. And it's difficult to make a decision to say that we would we would pose it to the general public if we don't have those numbers separated.
Sure.
We just have an overall revenue, and so if we're able to track that this season, um, then we can make a really informed decision at the end of the season based on the information we have in front of us.
Great, so what we can do then is, I'm gonna motion coming together here, and I just want to make sure that that reflects what you were saying, Council Kalbo.
Yeah, that's just specific to the campground, the the RV dump site is a separate issue that we talk about, yes?
Yeah, yeah, we did have a separate, okay. So, um, I'm just going to ask if there's any questions on the motion as as written before I read it out. If not, um, so it's been moved by Council Kalbo that the town maintains the campsite this year and track the revenue from individuals or from groups and reassess next year. Um, I will ask if you would like, if you'd like to speak to this?
I would, thank you. Um, I think, um, looking at the difficulties that we've had throughout the year um and understanding that those are increasing, I I realize that it's important that we take a good look at it. Um, however, it is really difficult to make a decision to close it down to the general public and just keep it open for for large groups and events without having those numbers to help us make that decision. And so I would like to um move this motion forward. Um, that we do track those numbers to allow us to make a good and informed decision.
And I will see if anyone would like to speak to the motion. Go ahead.
Actually, I have a question on the motion if I can just ask.
Yes, sir.
Um, I guess the way that I'm reading this, it says that we would have to maintain the campsite this year. If we were to look at potentially having somebody else contract that out or anything like that, would we be able to make a motion in the future to contract that out, sell it, be whatever it is? Or would this limit us to, because we would be going against a little council saying it's staying open for the year?
Well, I I guess I'm interpreting this as like, this is very much like if we go down this path, then we're not going, like, we can still request, like, I I believe that there's one coming up about like an RFD, um, like, we can still request that. Um, but maybe I'll ask uh ask you for some some weird thoughts on that too.
Yeah, thanks for the question, I appreciate that. And my thought would be, council could proceed with this, you know, at this time in the month of March. And in June or whenever at some other point this year, if things change, would be a simple matter of going back and rescinding this motion, which.
And I I would be happy to rescind that motion if we did find a contract or there was some other option. I guess my concern is just given that there's fourteen sites there, I'm not sure that that might, I'm not sure if that is a viable option for us at this point, but I am, so I'm just prepared to have it be open for now. And it may give time to explore that.
Great.
I guess, can I suggest, Mayor, can I make a motion to amend this though? Um, I would just like to amend it to just track the revenue from the individuals and groups. Because that way we wouldn't have to necessarily reset the motion. The operation of the campground would maintain, you know, time being. Because it's currently being operated that way.
Sorry, do you want to take it out or?
So I I guess, my thoughts are just the wording with the town maintains the campsite this year, right? Like, that speaks to me like we're gonna maintain it for the whole year. Whereas if we don't specify that, we're gonna continue operating as we are. So if we're just looking at tracking revenue from the individuals and groups, that's something that'll give us the information that we need to make an educated decision. But if we wanted to change things down the road, we wouldn't have to rescind this motion to be able to make that. I think, wait, I think, sorry, I'm sorry.
I I was just going to ask if you could, like, what what do you actually want to amend, what are the laws?
Just that the town tracks the revenue, like, if we maintain, like, as our legislative director has it highlighted, just remember highlighted part,
Yeah.
and then just let the town track the revenue in individuals and groups, and we can reassess next year.
So town tracks the revenues? Okay.
I guess what I'm trying to do is just not kind of box us into saying we have to operate the campground for the full year. If something comes up and we want to make a change based on the information that's provided, if we get more information from administration.
Okay. Um, so Council Akram has proposed this amendment. Um, would would you like to speak to it beyond that or?
No, I just, I guess, yeah, maybe, um, I think it's really important to get the information so that we can make informed decisions. But at the same time, I feel like that part of the motion may be a little bit redundant because we're already operating the campground. So it just, it feels to me like it might just add an extra step down the road if we do decide to change course on the campground operation or ownership.
Excellent. I will ask those to speak to the amendment if you were at this point in time. If you're in agreement or not with the amendment, you can.
You know, I would be comfortable with that amendment, I understand where you're going with this. I believe that we may have to rescind it anyways if we contracted it. I believe that they're the ones that manage the revenue, but I'm okay. Because you're right, it is redundant, I'd be happy to remove that piece. And perhaps track the revenue from individuals and from groups for the twenty twenty four or twenty twenty five season and reassess next year. If we just sort of put that in then, um, so that we know that it's, that, you know, that we're tracking it for the season, right? And so we, I I'd like to just see some reflection of that.
Okay, we can, we can.
Take that out, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak to the amendment to cover this? Um, okay, so we've got the proposed amendment is to cross off being in the campsite for this year. Um, so I'm going to call the question and see if everyone's okay with that amendment. Um, all those in favor with the amendment? Motion is carried, okay? And now, do we have another another potential amendment?
I think it just might be a friendly one, just to keep, just to make it concise and clear. Just that track the revenue from individuals and from groups for the twenty twenty five season. Right, and reassess next year. Because right now it has no no reflection of what, uh, what timeframe, right?
I'm going to look to council to see if if anybody's in, um, anybody disagrees with that since the motion is already out there. Is everybody okay with that, adding that in?
It's a friendly, what would that be?
Well, we can't really know differently, but yes. Yes?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, we did a friendly amendments, but also, um, I guess, would it be much different to say, you know, for for what we took out to put in, it's essentially saying the same thing. So as far as amendments, I guess.
So we we can do this as a, we'll do this as a more formal process then, so you're proposing this amendment to this?
Yeah, and I think, and I think, um, recognizing what Council Akram was indicating was the the redundancy of saying that that the town maintains that camp site or that campground. Um, and just to say, uh, just then we're just going to track it for this season, right? For the twenty twenty five season to have a a good um information, make a decision.
Great, okay, so again, I want to see if anyone would like to speak to the amendment here that's been put forward. Um, so anyone like to speak to it? If not, I will call the question, is everybody, those in favor of the amendment? In favor? Um, any opposed? Okay, so that's carried, okay, so here we go, so we're back for a motion here. So it's been moved by Council Kalbo that the town tracks the revenue from individuals and from groups for the twenty twenty five season and reassess next year. All right, would you like, you've spoke to this a little bit, but would you, would you like to, or you're good with that for now?
I'm good, I think we've spoken quite well to the town, please.
Um, would anybody else like to speak to the motion? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, well, while I, while I appreciate the motion of like wanting to like assess and track the revenue from the individuals or groups, um, I think that we need to consider like a motion of a larger scale where we can look at, you know, like a broader broader scale, so look at the park as a whole, look at some different options. Um, this is just asking one thing about the campground. Um, and I and I believe that we're not asking for enough information. Um, and so, like, while I support like getting some more specifics, I mean, I think that would be happening anyway based on on the report presented and what would be happening in in operations with a with a project like this, and so, um, I guess, I I maybe just see this as a little bit, like, I don't want to say unnecessary, but like, I almost feel like we should be making like a bigger motion with with points within it so that we can um encompass what everything says, because if we make this motion, then then we can't make any further motions, right?
Oh, we still can.
Like, so further motions, like, even what we were talking about with with what Council Akram's brought up with, with that, well, if we're gonna track it for the season, then we're not necessarily looking at, you know, what it would look like to contract it out or sell it, right? And so, like, I think if we're gonna do an RFD or ask the town, the administration to bring back an RFD, we should include your point as a point in the RFD. Um, and then for, as as for the potential motion listed there, um, when I was doing my research, that's just something that I came up with that is, um, even based on conversation now, I would probably change that, so, um.
So, um, just for myself for for this motion, while I understand the intent of wanting to get more information and to reassess, um, I very much believe that we we still, we have a lot of information, um, that's here. We don't have the exact numbers, but like, we're looking at not very much money in the grand scheme of things anyways. And so my thought is actually contrary to to this. And it says that I would actually like to see us move forward with looking at this as a space that we can rent. Um, I think that there's a lot of benefits to that, and so I have actually would like to consider a motion for that later on in the in the process here. But I think that there's a lot of benefits to that, especially as we're looking at our recreation master plan. And um, looking at this as a way to actually be able to market that as potentially um some some tourism, some um sport tourism in some ways or recreation tourism, right, to attract things like we talked about, the the scouts or the, you know, like, maybe someone wants to have fortieth birthday bash there or something like that. Um, I think that there are better better ways that we could actually address this. So, um, while I while I'm like the intent behind it, um, I would like us to just move forward. So I will not be supporting this motion, I'm sorry.
Just felt a big lump in my chest.
Um, would anybody else like to speak to this at all? If not, would you like, yes, of course.
I'm sorry, I think, as you see, I just in, to make it easy to see added the word campground revenue, just so the motion can stand alone because we put it in our tracking system and if it doesn't specify what revenue it might not clear.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's.
Great, thank you. Uh, Council Kalbo, would you like to close it all?
Do you know, I I appreciate the conversation, and I understand from a sort of strictly an economic point that it may not be our best asset. Uh, but I think it's something that we've had in our community for a long time. I would have a very difficult time just making determination to to close it down to the public at this time. If if I'm going to have to argue why we did that, I want to have really good solid information to put forward to people. Um, and, yeah, it it's it's difficult to make change when you don't have a lot of it, when you don't have a lot in the community, it's difficult to take away. And so, um, yeah, I would, I would support us maintaining that.
Great, um, so with that, I'll raise the motion out, so it's been moved by Council Kalbo, the town tracks uh the campground revenue from the individuals and for groups for the twenty twenty five season and reassesses next year. I will call question, all those in favor? Um, opposed? The motion is not carried. What what is this now?
Defeated, defeated.
Defeated, I never remember that one. Also known as not carried.
Thank you for joining, you're being gentle.
Um, Deputy Mayor Florence, I know that you had some some things that you potentially wanted to bring forward. Um, I I, you did indicate that you may want to consider revising your motion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would you, do you have the wording for that, or would you like a couple of minutes to take a recess and do that?
Uh, just can we take a quick recess?
Yes, of course, yeah. So let's do a recess here and we'll get that ready.
Thanks, we'll just. Thanks, we'll just.
As mentioned in the report and what we talked about tonight, that Miners Park is, the campground is quite a part of our community, but running the campground and the sandy dump within is straining our town's resources and our staffing, in terms of reservations and enforcement, and it demands are growing. So, one of the things that I was really drawn to was contracting out the service for Miners Park, because typically in other municipalities, they're not privately owned. But just in our conversations, and the information presented, as well as hearing from, from the expert on the matter, I think that, that might not be the best option, but I'd still like it to be something that may be considered. But, basically, to have an administration to prepare the RFD to, to look at our capacity and our limitations, and bring back what could potentially be done with that. Yeah, I guess, I like, I like some of the ideas that have been talked about tonight, and I think that this is, this is something that's been a part of our community for a long time. And so, I would like to see this service continued, particularly in relation to the sandy dump. As well, within the report, we talked about the sandy dump and moving it to 45th Ave. I think that with this motion, that potentially could be addressed as well, and how that would be best addressed from, from looking at it from an operations perspective, and from budget, and what would work best there. And so, for, and for those reasons, I make this motion.
Thank you. Well, I didn't really like to speak to this. Go ahead, Councilor Flores.
Yeah, I, I didn't see, you know, when I looked at the council, the report from administration, it wasn't identified as an option that was proposed by administration to have them look at options for contracting it out. You know, repurposing the land was suggested there, for example. But, I, yeah, I, because if we look at the revenue, and even if you increase the rental fee, it's pretty, it's a pretty small revenue, I guess, for anybody who would be looking to operate a campground, I would, I would guess. So, I, I think, well, I don't mind if there was, if we had this information. I, for me, I wouldn't consider it, just because I, I don't think it's worth investigating, that there, that that the management of it is, it's going to cause more problems, I think, than if, you know, if we contract other management causes more problems than, than just trying to fix them ourselves, I, I think. So, that's kind of where, where my opinion is right now, is that I don't think it's worth investigating.
Any other, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this holistically between the sandy dump and the campsite, it's bringing out a net loss for the town, so I'm in support of finding out via an RFD what this could look like for the best operations, because even if we do maintain the campsite, you know, it's taking up staff time, which could be used elsewhere. I know that we have limited resources and what we do, so when I look at this one, I kind of think, you know, if we did contract it out, or use it just for special events, or something to do with the rec master plan, maybe that opens up an opportunity for those staffing hours to be used elsewhere, and maybe it could open up the ability to not have to bring on another person as soon, because you have a little bit more capacity in the current workforce that we have. So I'm excited to see what comes back with this.
Are there anyone else to speak?
I, yeah, I.
Yeah.
Sure, thank you. I think it makes sense to explore these, if it's not an owner's job to, to explore who might contract. I think, if we're looking at contracting out, I think we have to recognize that there has to be a good contract, that doesn't mean that we do have a lot of peace officer and public works hours involved in, in supporting them with, you know, if they have any challenges, is what we have been seeing. Yeah, I mean, I, I would like us to be able to explore anything that allows us to keep that campsite open, and keep it viable for us.
For myself, I'm really, I'm really not into the whole component of having contracting out these services. I don't, I don't think that that is, that, that just doesn't really sit well with me in terms of this. However, I am open to looking at what this can look like. From my understanding, the campground is not really used by residents of the community, it's used by other people. And, and I don't know if that's a correct assumption. But, so to me, it's not necessarily about losing a community resource, or a community space, it's more people coming into the community, kind of individually. That's why I really like this idea about if this can be a usable rental space, where it's like that, I believe that it would highly cut down on, probably some of the issues that might, might be happening in terms of, like, the cleanliness and things like that, which would then reduce staffing time at that point in time. It would also, like I said, I think it would actually be another marketing type of thing, in a way to say, like, come to our community and utilize this. Where if you're within the community, you can use us for family reunions, it would actually be better utilized, I believe, at this point. And that's very much where, for me, I think that I, I, I support part of the motion, but I don't support the idea of potentially selling it or contracting it out. So as the, as this is written right now, I will not be in support of it. I will go around to see if anyone else would like to have a second second component. We'll start it, we'll start it, Deputy Mayor.
Great, thank you. So I guess in terms of contracting out, there's, there's a few reasons why I think it's a good idea. And, and this is just from, from an economic standpoint. I know that there's considerations for, for the space that are pretty specific to Miners Park and the area and stuff like that. But I think that when we, when we, when we consider contracting things out, we, we can maintain our high standard for the campground, and we can set that into, into a contract without taking from the resources, our resources from other town services. Secondly, an investor could invest in upgrades and modernize that, they could do better signage, they could do expanded programming, they could track more visitors, and they could change their prices. And third, this would keep Miners Park accessible to the public while shifting the day-to-day operations to somebody else, bringing up staff, staff focus to other priorities. I also think what we're talking about here, when we're talking about a loss of revenue, is about like two to three grand. And so, like, we're, we're not talking about large, large amounts. So, like, while I can appreciate that it's running at a slight deficit, it's, it's not a huge deficit. And I guess part of, part of why I put this motion forward, again, based on our conversation and, and, and the report, is because we talk a lot about the bigger picture, and the bigger picture of Miners Park, and what it could potentially look like. And I know that we have aging facilities there too, so we've talked about the ranking at the end of life. We know that there's a minor snack shack there that is not in good repair, could need major upgrades. We know there's the Mud Hill slash 4B and X trap rate. And so, when I look at it like big picture, and when I think of contracting out or using it as part of the rec master plan, or using it, you know, potentially for other things in the future that I won't want to do right now, I, I think that there's, there's many feasible options, but I don't want to limit us by just saying it should be this, or only this, right? And, but I would very much agree. I think that when it comes to the social area, and we use it attached to it, that that's where the benefit for our community is, not necessarily in renting it to people who are coming through. And so, I'm very open to what this could potentially look like in terms of what happens with the, with the campground, and as well as for the sandy dump move. Oh, one last thing I wanted to say on the sandy dump story, with putting it on 45th Ave, is just making sure that, just because we are working with the wetlands committee on that, that the wetlands committee is putting in input as well as operations and council and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to point out that there, we don't have any sort of viable options for people to stay when they come to visit family, if they, if they can't stay in their home. And my understanding is that to some degree, it's used at times, and I don't know that it's very often, it may not be very often. But I just wanted that to be a part of the conversation as well. That when we're looking at, you know, the use of it, I agree, the, the loss is not a tremendous amount of loss. In my mind, it's more about how can we sort of mitigate some of the challenges that we're facing right now. But, you know, I'm open to exploring different things, with the exception of, I'm not sure that it, they may come back and say it's really not viable, that we can subsidize just to sell that at that point, but I'm, you know, I'm open to looking at different options, to see how we can keep it open successfully.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm open to options too, and I, I just think like for, definitely like selling and contracting out, like if, what does the access look like for whoever's buying it, or, or what for contractors, if they want certain rules about when they can drive? And is that, are they going to be out there shouting at kids or something like, is that, is that going to cause problems? You know, if, if there's the shared use kind of thing, whereas in the town, it's altogether. And then when I think of contracting out, I think of, like, the YMCA in South Bridge, that used to be downtown, it was contracted out to the Y, the city-owned building, contracted out to Y. And see, they never put any dollars into maintenance, and it fell apart, so they did a moshup, built all wounds. And so what was the cost there? And that was way bigger cost than the maintenance of the building. And we can have two YMCA's, by the way. So, contractors may not invest in ongoing maintenance, they just might make it look great, right? And then, and then, and then in the end, we just end up with something that's terrible. So, I mean, you can put that into the contract, but then is it going to be appetizing to them to look at? Is it, you know, what, what is their revenue? Are we actually paying them to operate it, and then are we actually paying more? Potentially, like that, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, if, I'm fine if it wants, if, if council wants to go down that path and consider what those numbers look like. I just, I don't think it's, I'm not supportive of doing that at this time.
Any others, the second round? All right, would you like to close it all?
No, thank you.
All right. So it is moved by Deputy Mayor Flores, the Council directs administration to bring back a request for decision for council's consideration regarding the management of Miners Memorial Park Campground and Sanitary Dump. The RFD should outline what this could look like, including the options for selling, contracting out, or using as a part of the recreation master plan. I will call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. Great.
Yeah. Is this one gone?
Yeah.
Anything?
Thank you.
Excellent. And that one can be deleted as well?
As well.
Yeah, particular.
I didn't want to send in another motion, though.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just that you held it. Okay, I'll copy and paste that up there, wait here. So I'll just bump it down to the next page, and it's on the next page, there we go. So you want me to read that out?
Uh, yes.
So I move that Council Director Administration to prepare a request for decision for council's consideration, outlining proposed updates to Miners Park Campground. The RFD shall include, not be limited to, the placement of prepaid online reservation system, code access, keyless entry for washroom facilities, and gated access controlled by digital code for registered visitors.
Great, any questions on the motion? If not, you made this motion, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we asked the question, should municipalities operate a campground, I don't know. But like, I, I, I think, you know, if they're a net benefit to the community, and, you know, and we can, we can, we can have the the public value there, I guess, in terms of the long-term recreational and tourism strategy, I think, I think it can be a value in our community. So, we haven't, I think, done any updates to the, to the campground in a long time. Maybe that's one reason we're having some of these issues. I think, I think if we upgraded our security and modernized it to be a, a friendlier system to those who want to book it for a weekend, or, or traveling through it, and can pre-book it, like, at least for me, when I go camping somewhere, and it's like, come as whatever you want, that just might, makes my anxiety through the roof, I don't like, I'm not going to camp outside with five, four kids, right? I gotta know, it's a good spot, I want to get there, right? So, I think, I think it doesn't hinder, it actually helps our, us be a more viable destination for, for visitors, and anyone who wants to come to our community, as well as enhancing the security and, you know, reducing the issues that we've been seeing at the campground. So, that's why I'd like to see some, see what it might take in terms of costs, and, you know, and to influence some of these. And, yeah, that's why I would like to move forward.
Great, thank you. Anybody else to speak to?
Great, thank you. Maybe let's begin this. Yes.
I guess. Um I think this would be a wonderful um solution. I guess my concern is that we're looking at, we're talking about an asset that has fourteen sites. And so in order to recover costs, that we invest into this type of a thing, I think we would look at, be looking at a potentially a number, a large number of years um to recover costs. I I but I I think it's worth taking a look at, seeing what the cost would be associated with this. Um and then we have to have a conversation, what cost better than analysis, right? The benefits it brings to our community and maybe we advertise it better, I I I'm not sure. Um but I do like these solutions. Um as long as we have an understanding that there there's gonna be some costs, right? Is that what the request is, to look at the budget associated with these things?
Yeah, prepare a request for decision for council consideration.
Yeah, okay.
So and that whatever, if there's costs associated with those, some of those.
Yeah, I mean, but we'll just pencil it, put a eight would be pretty. Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Um any other discussion? Um I think for myself with this, um I'm still not convinced that this is helping the our community. I think that it is, I I like this idea better, um but I I still don't, I'm still not sure that I'm fully on board with this. Um however, because it is an R F D, um I am curious about some of those things. And it looks like we'll have, if this if this motion passes, there'll be an R F D, kind of like two potentially happening here. And so um I'm in support of receiving the the information to just take a look at it. But I'm, at this point, I'm not a hundred percent convinced about the idea, but would be interested in information. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um this one, I'm kinda trying to wrap my head around. One of the things that I was looking at is the strategic plan. I know that we're supposed to make decisions on the messages of the town. And when I look at those, I just kind of see a high price tag. I mean, I don't, I don't know what they are, but it seems like it would be a high price tag. I don't know if we would have the infrastructure there to have keyless entries for washroom facilities or if that was something else that we'd have to look at if there wasn't a way to activate that, however that might be. Um but one of the things, when I'm looking at the um strategic plan, is when we're talking about creating spaces for people to gather within the community. The mayor was mentioning before, you know, if we could use that space to help elevate opportunities for people within the community, be it family reunions or whatever, I think that that's more in alignment with their strategic plan versus trying to create a space for people that may be passing through that aren't necessarily residents. Um I would be hesitant to put money towards this with the current utilization rates with the campground as is. Um and I know with how busy administration is and kind of the feeling of even if the information came, I'm kind of feeling opposed to it already. I don't know if it's worthwhile tasking administration with that ask grid at this time.
Thank you. Um any other discussion? Yes?
Um I I think that, you know, the the, I mean, it sounds fancy, but you can buy what your doorknob, right, at Home Depot and give a keyless, keyless entry for your house, right, for a lot, a bunch of bucks, sorry. So it's, it's it's not, it's not that fancy of a of a system, let's say it's it's that's the technology's more accessible whenever I feel like. Um and I don't think this limits in any way the ability for our community residents to book that system. In fact, I think it makes it more accessible if you're trying to book a reunion or something like that, you can just quickly go check what what is booked, what is available, yeah, we want to book it for a reunion. Um I don't, I don't, you know, I'm talking to my uh whatever, my brother-in-law at seven o'clock at night, town's not open. You know, is it open or not? Like, you can just go check that, right? So I think I think have, and and this is where I think we've tried to move with some, with some of the other facilities, like the the hall, for example. Um we've tried to do that as well, and if an online system is inhibiting people from accessing it, then why are we trying to go down this path again? That's basically, I I think, I think it's just along the same lines of where we've been going with our, uh, trying to go, at least with our um other systems, right? So um the, you know, whether whether it's, I I think for a campground, for a bottom line, like, so we're not subsidizing it so much. I don't think it should be limited to just community, like if we're talking reunions type of thing. Um because, you know, they're they're, they may be only using it a certain time, and maybe there is opportunity, we can get more use out of it, more uh more fees and and not have to worry about the collection, not have to worry about enforcement. Like, I think these small changes will help us to be able to get more revenue and reduce our enforcement cleaning costs, right? So I think for the the small investment um that it would be, uh it 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 might pay off uh really quickly, I think, so.
Thank you.
You know, I think, I think it's difficult to have conversations about what it may cost. Um when we, you know, when we don't really know. Um but it would be worth having the information in front of us to find out what it costs, because um I can see, I can see the opportunities with this, where we have, if it's an online reservation system, that it opens up at a certain time for large groups to to take, to book. Um and then open it up for individuals after that point. I mean, I can see there's lots of opportunity, and I know that it's a really attractive campground if we get pictures of the playground and, you know, for people that have children. And I don't think we're doing those things very well, like really, you know, getting the great pictures and advertising it well. Um this may be the thing, if it's not, if it's not expensive to, if it's, if it's not a huge cost to implement this. So I would be interested in taking a look at. Um I think it's just a question of looking things up online and making a few phone calls, my hope is.
Great. Um any other, any other discussion? If not, council question, would you like to? No? Okay. So it's been moved by Council Country, that Council directs administration to prepare a request for decision for council's consideration outlining proposed updates to Miners Park Campground. The R F D shall include, but not, but not be limited to, the implementation of prepaid online registration system, code access, um keyless entry for washroom facilities, and gated access controlled by additional entry code for registered campers. I will call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried.
At least we can buy what it's doing.
Right?
It's unusual for us with that.
Okay, so keep moving on here then. Um so we're going to our first request for decision, which comes from uh Council Country. So I'm just going to, we'll look at this, so we have the information that has been presented in front of us. Um the request to um reimbursement for repairs for the driver's window. Um for council question when we went to Edmonton. Um I will ask council if you have any questions on the information provided. Yes?
Thank you, thank you. Um I guess my question is, do we not have a policy that that covers costs associated with with this? It it had to come before council?
Um in terms of of the the?
My understanding, my understanding was that we had a policy that that covered this kind of thing. Any costs associated with town business, would this not just be considered that? I'm not sure why it's just not governed by the policy. Why is it coming forward as an R F D?
From my understanding, we do not have a policy. Um so that's why it's coming forward, unless anybody else, otherwise. Do you know otherwise?
I was gonna ask if there was a copy of the um travel and hospitality policy. Um when I was looking at this, through council remuneration, they're talking about uh travel and hospitality policy, and I didn't see that anywhere. So I was just wondering if there's anything in there that might speak to this, if administration has a copy of that.
Yes, can we recess? Do we need recess or do you have?
Can, or I know, because I've worked on that this week, actually, the council remuneration policy is one of one's council directed administration to review and come back with some uh options. And um there's nothing in there of that nature. In fact, it's, it's very sparse and it's back. It was adopted in two thousand and nine. And I think a year or two ago, there was one that was drafted and came before the risk and the insurance committee or a former committee that existed. But it, there's no evidence, and I've looked through minutes, I've looked through agendas, I've, you know, there's nothing to suggest to me that it was ever adopted, even though it refers, as Council arguments points out, in the council remuneration policy, it refers to that travel expenses policy. But that's just more, um you know, meals, mileage, hotel costs, that sort of thing. Nothing that would address it.
Sorry, I thought it was another of costs approved, associated with it. So I thought that was put in there specifically saying other costs associated with uh the town business. But and I thought this just kind of fell under that. I didn't realize it hadn't gone anywhere, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I I could, as we suggested initially, Mayor, if you'd like, maybe have a short recess and I could pull up that uh
Sure, that that would be great.
Policy briefly, yeah.
We can do that? Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Calvall, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to move that as per the payment of expenses policy, the three hundred and seventy-two-dollar fifty-five-cent expense for Councilor Potry's vandalized vehicle window while it was on council business be approved.
Right. Would you, any questions on the motion, I guess, before we go ahead? If not, Councilwoman Calvall has made this motion. Would you like to speak to this at all?
I think it's self-explanatory, but I think it's just important to note that the vehicle would not have been in that location in the city to be vandalized had we not been engaged in council business. We do have a policy that speaks to this, and so I appreciate the opportunity to fit this within that policy.
Great, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, and I'm truly sorry that would happen to you. That being said, I really don't think that it's a tax-farce expense to pick up the cost for your broken, unfortunately. Insurance exists for this reason. Unfortunately, it is a high deductible, but then again, I don't think that means that the town should pick it up. I think that we already get expense payments, as stated, and that cost covers where we're here. And so that's pretty standard. I also think, like, when I went to Alberta municipalities, I purchased extra insurance in case of something like this, and so I didn't submit that to the town. And I just don't think that a submission like this is appropriate, and so I would be opposed to it.
Anyone else like to speak to this? If not, I will, would you like to close it off?
Well, I respect Deputy Mayor's, um, for instance, approach on this. I think it's important that we also understand that any additional costs that are incurred by our council members present a barrier to, you know, to fully take part in all the business of council. And so it's important that we do provide that support.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Councilwoman Calvall that as per the payment of expenses policy, the three hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents expense for Councilor Potry's vandalized vehicle window while on council business be approved. I will call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. Moving on to our next item here, we did receive another motion from Councilor Potry. Would you like to adjourn?
Yes. So whereas municipal governments play a crucial role in shaping the community and informed candidates contribute to effective governance, and whereas many potential candidates may be interested in running for council but require more information about the roles, responsibilities, and expectations of the municipal councillors. Whereas of the municipalities and the government provides resources to support prospective candidates in understanding municipal governance and election process. Therefore, be resolved that administration organize a host SOE Want to Be Councilor Information Night in advance of the next municipal election, providing potential candidates with overview of council duties, time commitments, and the nomination process. And for the administration, promote the event through municipal websites, social media, and local publications to ensure broad community awareness and participation.
Thank you for that. That was great. Any questions on the motion to speak before? If there is not, so Councilor Potry has made this motion, would you like to speak to this at all?
Yes, I know there's lots of people in our community. Maybe many of them don't know anyone on council, and they may not know much about council, but they want to contribute to the community. I think the more people we can have involved in our municipal government only enhances the process, as I say in the motion. And it gives all our residents a choice in terms of who they want to be governing them. So I would like, I've heard from other communities as well that they've put on these nights as well already, actually. And give residents a chance to, you know, speak with administrations, council about potentially running in the upcoming elections. So I think it would be a great opportunity to help our democratic process.
Great, thank you. Before I move into Council speaking, I'm breaking my rules a little bit here. But I understand that administration might have some ideas regarding this as well, and so I'd like to just invite them to provide some additional context if you would like to do that.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayamontina. Just wanted to provide council and the public with some additional information as well. As noted in our administration report today too, there is a link to our website. And we have completed a pretty comprehensive overview for both voters and candidates for the upcoming election. And part of that process, as well as if a candidate comes into the office, they are welcome to sit down with us one-on-one, and we'd be happy to provide up to one-hour session with anybody who is interested to learn a little bit more based off of the materials that we have provided. There is also a lot of materials that, as you know, the municipalities has and the Alberta government, that can help provide additional information to county candidates. In addition to that, the MGA requires that administration provides all elected officials council orientation, which is a mandated role by the CIO and administration to onboard council members at that time. The MGA does not stipulate that we need to provide information to potential candidates before an election. And there is some reason around that, and that's because the CIO reports to council members. So that's definitely why you see municipalities provide that information ahead of time instead of having that information provided beforehand from administration to their potential employer. So maybe not sure if there's any other insight on?
Yeah, I've, you know, been involved in four or five elections, maybe a couple by-elections, and I haven't seen this occur, what's being suggested. Not saying that it doesn't, in fact, Councilor Potry said he's aware of some, so I respect that and don't question that at all. If I were there, for example, as the returning officer, you know, I'll do whatever I'm asked or directed, of course. But as the returning officer, you know, I need to be absolutely objective and unbiased and equally fair to everyone. And, you know, in an open forum, let's say, where there were members of the public potential candidates and existing councilors there, you know, my, just a little bit of worry is if I were to say something that was misinterpreted to a potential candidate, that might come back later to, you know, create awkwardness, if nothing else. I'd probably be a little more comfortable as kind of meeting one-on-one, as our CIO suggested, but yeah, I guess that's just a few thoughts. Appreciate being proposed of, I certainly understand. And I think there has been an improvement from what it used to be, because I believe candidates, you maybe pick a number ten, or fifteen, or twenty years ago, maybe there wasn't very much, or not nearly the amount of information and education and training that there is today for elected officials, which is great, and everybody benefits. And it's really important that anyone going in to, you know, put their name in as a candidate for a municipal election is very aware of what they're maybe getting into should they be successfully elected.
Great, thank you very much. Yes.
Sorry, just some more question on the materials in front of us here. Do, is this something we have, give that access to people as a resource for Alberta municipalities? It's just a whole series of videos, I mean, as opposed to doing it as a big public forum.
We'd be happy to add that information to our website as an additional resource.
I think it's already there.
Oh, is it there?
Pretty sure. Kristi will recall, she might be looking right at it.
I know we have the, we have the Alberta government resources, not T-shirt, but yeah, as many resources we're certainly happy to provide.
They can compare it around the website.
Yes.
Would anybody like to speak to this? I'm sorry, I did that a little bit backwards than I normally do, so I apologize for that.
I have to say that was really important to hear that, because it gave us a new perspective on this. You know, we're always wanting to share information and create opportunities for the public, but we, you know, we have to do it in a manner that doesn't present potential conflict or concern. So I think it is, I appreciate that you went in that direction.
Would anybody like to speak to the motion as it is coming up? Yes?
Yeah, I think just kind of what administration was saying. I see this more as something that we have to be mindful of. I think there's resources out there. I know as being Alberta municipalities board member, there's a series of videos that had board members from RMA, Alberta municipalities talking about what it's like being a councillor. There's also one from different members of Alberta municipalities. Like some of the people in the video are as close as leverage. But I think even if we just added those extra resources, like to our website or as an offering, I think that kind of gives a perspective of council members for what it's like. Because they talk about, you know, like, how does it impact your family? What are, what is your typical council day? Like, how many hours are you spending? I think a lot of that information is there. I think that providing that information to potential candidates is great because it's an education piece for what council actually does. Because a lot of people get elected and they don't necessarily realize what's going on or what their role is, or they think they can do A, B, and C. When in reality, it's something else, right? So I think that education component is key. And I think, just having a look at the website right now, I think there's quite a bit of information on there.
Thank you. I love the intention behind, I think, what you were proposing here. But I think in hearing the information about just like that idea of like the bias and minimizing that, I'm not sure that it's the best for the municipality posters. But would love, like, you know, and I think that's even the same during, with the campaign time. When I think it was, I can't remember who held the debate to, it wasn't the municipality. It was, I don't know, it was the Legion? Or someone that had actually done that, and so maybe it's somebody that lives there. But I also like this idea potentially of maybe it's not this type of event, but maybe part of the, as you indicated, if you're willing to meet with people individually, maybe that's something that's also incorporated into our communications and social media posts to invite people that may have those questions to actually connect with our staff members here. But, so while it pains me to not support the motion, it is just for those reasons only. Any other, any other discussion? Yes?
To now say, I'm not, I don't, it wasn't the previously, the one prior. The library did an incredible forum that I was a part of, but that was specifically for women taking part, and we had a lot of, so it might be worth reaching out or letting them do the forums that they do and making sure that we share that with our residents. Any opportunity that we can share those kinds of opportunities with our residents is really important. Yeah.
Councilor Potry, would you like to close off?
Yes. Yeah, no, it's great to hear the concerns, I think, from administration. And I think they could be navigated fairly simply, you know, by focusing on the information that is posted online and easily accessible for all. So I don't think that there is, I was assuming that there's a clear understanding of what can and can't be said. I don't think there's a potential conflict that I see unnecessarily. And while these resources, I think, are great in terms of, a meeting is even better, of course. That's a great, a great offering as well. You know, people may, again, and if you're willing to meet in the evening when people are not working potentially as well, I know that maybe something is worth considering as well. But having it as an open welcome invitation, I feel like feels a little, feels good. And then it also speaks specifically to Colvers, whereas these resources are more of a generic blanket application across the province, right? So, you know, what is like a Colvers council, right? So maybe that's the information that would be most valuable people had an information night for that.
Thank you. So Councilor Potry has made this motion. So it says, whereas municipal government plays a crucial role in shaping the community and informed candidates contribute to effective governance, and whereas many potential candidates may be interested in running for council will require more information about the roles, responsibilities, and expectations of municipal councillors. And whereas Alberta municipalities and the Alberta government provides resources to support prospective candidates in understanding municipal governance and the election process. Therefore, be resolved that administration organize and host a SOE Want to Be a Councilor Information Night in advance of the next municipal election, providing potential candidates with an overview of council duties, time commitments, and the nomination process. And further, that administration promotes the event through the municipal website, social media, and local publications to ensure broad community awareness and participation. I will call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion is defeated. All right, well, moving on now to our next item here. So we have the Policy of Review Project. And so we do have information in front of us, and I will go to Council to see if there are any questions on the material that has been provided. Go ahead.
No, I just want to make the motion to rescind the policies. I think the information's before us, I think, if I can speak to that quickly. Administration's done a really good job of trying to clean things up. I think this is just, you know, postkeeping and anything run through this. So I'd be happy to move that if you'd like to hear that.
Yes, please.
Okay. So I move that following policies be rescinded. Policy number zero-zero-zero-one, zero-eight, snap volunteer appreciation event. Policy zero-zero-zero-one, one-eight, EU nine-one-one hang-ups. Policy zero-zero-zero-one, ten, meeting notice. Policy twelve-oh-one-oh-one, office fee schedule. Policy forty-one-zero-one-oh-four, utility rates and charges. Policy seventy-four-oh-two-oh-two, community center inspections. Policy zero-zero-zero-one, zero-three, community at the whole. Policy zero-zero-zero-one, zero-nine, memberships. And finally, policy zero-zero-zero-one-eleven, minor state committee.
Um, Councilwoman Ackerman has made this motion. Is there any questions on the motion? Um, any, would you like to say anything else? Any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. As mentioned in the beginning of the report, that this will have literally no impact on individuals or citizens in the community. But I think that resonating with all policies and continuing to replace them with new policies and updated bylaws and the framework is setting us up for success and for decision-making in the future and to prevent future issues as we've even seen this meeting with our old stuff. So thank you for the work you do.
Would you like to close it off? Okay. So Councilor Ackerman has made the motion to rescind the policies as listed. I will call the question, all those in favor? The motion is carried. We will now move on to committee reports. So I will just ask if there are any questions on the two committee reports or if we are okay to move past them. If there's no questions, we'll keep moving on. Just moving into council reports, just to give a brief, I guess, report on some of the things that have been happening. I think for me, went to Alberta municipalities spring caucus, or spring leaders caucus, which was excellent. There was really great information there about stability within elected officials. I don't remember what the actual title was. But I actually found that this session, that entire three days was really, really great. There was a lot of great information there and really enjoyed the time there. Also got to spend some good time with some of our neighbors in Mcclaircellan and learning a little bit more about them, and so that was great as well. And then the other big thing too is that on Monday, I was happy that we hosted our first intermunicipal workshop, I guess is what we wanted to call it. And we're able to host some of our neighboring municipalities here to talk about some common goals, which was really exciting to see what that looked like and to build some relationships. So that's kind of, that's what I've been doing. And moving forward, I've got some SUGAR meetings coming up. And next week also is the South Grow, what is it called here? Economic Summit. Good, glad to hear it, Scott. So I will be attending that as well next Thursday. So we'll just move on now to Deputy Mayor.
Great, thank you. So some of the meetings that I've attended recently is the Economic Enhancement and Growth Politing Week, the Agenda Setting Committee, and the Regional Intergovernmental Workshop. Coming up next week, we have the Finance and Community at the Whole, Community Futures Month, the four meeting, and the Agenda Setting Committee as well as MSDA. I've actually seen this, I've been meaning to forward all this training opportunity for community futures. It's an intro to AI, so if anybody's interested, I will pass that along. And that is it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no questions, we will move to Councilwoman Ackerman.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have this on my recognitions at the time, but the Colvers High School growth faculty meeting, I didn't have this on my recognitions at the time, but the Culvers, Culvers High School, um, girls' basketball team is currently playing. And I believe it's. Hope. Is it? Provincial's in Olds. And they won their first game and they got another game coming up. So I hope they keep, um, doing well. And it's good to see them representing our town in a positive way. So thank you to all of you that are participating in that. I kind of had my report with some of the, um, meetings that I spoke about last week. I guess the only things coming up really are like Highway three twenty development association meeting. The economic strategy meeting for Alberta municipalities along with the board meeting. And then we got our Wetlands specialized committee meeting coming up. So that was kind of everything that I have.
Good. Um, if there's no questions, we will move to Councillor Culver.
Thank you. I did want to, um, recognize, uh, our community as a whole. I'd been away for two weeks and it's always good to come home and just take a look at Facebook. And I'm always, I just feel so happy to be home again. When I'm looking at, you know, neighbors reaching out and helping neighbors. People helping others that have experienced tragedy. People that have getting people's dogs home to them. This lovely gentleman who set up a, a, a little lending library for dogs, for, for toys and treats. And I'm posting those videos and it just gives me a sense of really like community. And I just, I love that. And so I just want to recognize that. That's not something that everybody sees where they live. So we're really blessed with that. As I said, I have been away, so I haven't had a, a lot going on. Green Acres Foundation's both the finance and the board meeting. Berens, Rico Warner, FCSS, I attended as well the regional intergovernmental workshop. And I have to say, I just, again, I have to say thank you, uh, both to our mayor and our CIO on, on running, facilitating that. For setting it up and facilitating it. The people that I spoke to had never seen anything like that before in that manner and the work that they do on their councils. And really enjoyed, um, how unique it was. That they could sort of organically talk about what was important to them rather than sort of that big room. Kind of conversation where everybody's trying to fit in with how everybody else needs their things, right? And so I think, you know, that coming together, um, was a, a really, uh, it was just a really great way to, to manage that. And people really, at the end of it, were really complimentary and appreciated it. Let's see, what do I have coming up? Of course, we do have upcoming our FCSS, um, all council gathered as well, um, in Coldale. And what else do we have? And I've got the Green Acres again coming up, um, as well as a number of other meetings that will be upcoming up. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any questions, if not, we'll go to Councillor Pochery.
Thank you, Mayor Martina. So, yeah, it's, uh, my report is there, it's the, the municipalities as well. And I have the, um, I did make a little report. I didn't, wasn't able to attend the, um, the Wednesday session that Mayor Martina attended. But, um, I was able to attend the Thursday and Friday sessions, so, you know, so they're. Probably one of the interesting things that I, one of the most interesting sessions was the, the Trump card one, I thought. And, um, they had some really good panel experts there. That is when I got the call from empty police. And, uh, so I missed the last 10 minutes, but. But yeah. So, yeah, so those are my, those are my, uh, that's my report.
Great, thank you. So we will move on to correspondence now. We do have, um, one piece of correspondence that did come from the high school. And I would like to, um, to make the motion right there. So I went to make that the town provides five scholarships in the amount of whatever it was last year. I don't remember what it was last year.
One hundred dollars each.
Okay. Okay, in the amount.
Was it more for grade twelve?
Yes, it later on, it needs to include a scholarship.
Yes. So in the amount of one hundred dollars each for grades eight to eleven, town of Culvers scholarships and the mayor's community award. What was that one?
Which includes a one thousand dollar scholarship.
Okay. Mayor's community award which includes a one thousand dollar scholarship. We just have to add that part there, Larry.
Great.
After Mayor's community award.
Sorry.
Which in, that includes a one thousand dollars.
I apologize if I missed that, I read through that, I didn't see it.
Oh, that's okay. One thousand dollar scholarship. To be presented on Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM during the annual academic award ceremony at Culvers High School. Is there any questions on the motion? If not, um, just to speak to this, I, this is something that we've, I think we've done for quite a few years, ever since I go for this council term. And it's always great to see what, what the students are doing and to recognize their efforts as, as they're moving forward. And so I'm happy to, to put this motion forward. Again, uh, would anybody else like to speak to this at all? Yeah.
Sure, thank you. I think the unique nature of this award is that we do our best with the, the students that go forward. Their, their, um, I guess, what do we call them, essays to us? Where they talk about what leadership means to them. And I think it's, it is really unique in that, um, although we do recognize and we admire these strong academics. It gives opportunities for people that maybe that's not their strength, but they are strong leaders. And so, um, that's, that's what I really appreciate about the, the nature of this award.
Great, thank you. Um, if there's no other, no other discussion, um, so I've made the motion here to support this. I will call the question, all those in favor? The motion is carried. Thank you. All right, so the next one that we have here is the CHS Basketball Provincials Community Grant. I will ask council if there's any questions on the information that has been provided. If there's not, um, go ahead.
Thank you. I move that the Culvers High School will be granted five hundred dollars for the Neighborhood Connections Micro Grant Program to support the senior girls' basketball team. It would travel its senses to a provincial basketball tournament in Olds and Ditzbury.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask if there's any questions from council, um, on the motion. I did, I did have one question that, that, um. That I, that, that may be more of a, an amendment. For myself, I'm wondering if we can actually change this so that it is not part of the Neighborhood Connections Micro Grant Program. But would be sponsorship that would come from, um. From reserves or from some other, other source. So I will ask if, if, if you were open to that or if you would like me to do a formal amendment. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, uh, what would be your reasoning behind that?
Um, because I don't think this, this actually fits within the micro grant. I, I, I'm starting to feel that some of these, some of the applications are, while they're really great, I'm not, they're fully fitting the intent of the grant. Um, and while I really want to fund this, I just don't believe that it fits the intention. And so that's why I was just wanting to do it a little differently. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. Um, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, I think that maybe not the Neighborhood Connection Micro Grant Program, but I think it would fit within the community grant program. And I guess because, um, that's where it's been, been requested, um, I would change it to a community grant program, but not, um. I altogether. Oh my goodness, sorry.
Okay, um, so, so you would be willing to say neighborhood, community?
Just community grant program.
Just community grant, okay? Is anybody, is anybody opposed to that proposed change? No, okay. So if we change that through the, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
If, if I may, um, through the mayor to, to council. So it's the Culvers Community Grant Program, but it's one of two streams. And so I had reviewed those two streams. And because it, so I actually made recommendation to the school that they go through the micro grant stream rather than the community support stream. It's really six of one, half a dozen of the others, just a name within the streams. But because it's such a small specified group of people and not open to the community as a whole. So when we're looking at setting precedent for future applications, um, like the, uh, minor basketball group that came. And we're looking for two thousand dollars for jerseys, that program is open to the whole community. Whereas this is a very specified group and is rather closed. So if you're looking at more like that neighborhood micro grant, um, it would be in the somewhere main. That was the reasoning behind the, the recommendation to the group.
Can I just speak, and I, and I'm not sure, I, we have typically sponsored with some small sponsorship dollars. Like in the past, the sports teams that were going to provincials or, or that were doing something that sort of brought pride to the community in some manner, right? And I, and we didn't use, we didn't have the grant program at the time. And it was just sort of a town sponsorship in recognition of, of the work that they've done and what they're doing for, you know, for the community. Do we, do we have any policy that would not allow that to occur any longer?
Yes. Thank you for the question. I, I can't speak to sponsorship, but I not give a policy that prohibits donations from the town. And so that was why we also recommended to the government that they go through the community program.
No, that makes sense.
All right, so if we were to change this to, I guess, well, I guess that in that regard, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. I, I still do not believe that this fits the grant. I think that sponsorship is something different. And, um, well, I, I appreciate the, the intent of, of putting it through this. I, I don't, I don't feel that it fits it, but I'm happy to support it. But I just think that it needs to be done at a different way. And the reason basically is for, for precedent setting. Because to me, the, the micro grant, when you really look at it, it really talks about, um, it's, it, to me, it's within the community. It's not about going away and doing things. And this is that they're going away. To me, that's a sponsorship opportunity, which I'm absolutely happy to sponsor them because it brings that community pride. But it, to me, does not fit under this, this actual grant. So, um, that's why I, I, I guess that I'm going to make a, a formal. What am I doing? Amendment.
Amendment.
Requesting that this, um, be changed to, rather than through the micro grant, through sponsorship.
General.
From general reserves. And again, I, I have spoken about, about my reason behind that. I think that, again, just the micro grants are really about building community here. And, um, open to community here, as well as even the community grants. I believe that it's about the community as a whole. And so that, that is my, my thought behind this. I'm happy to provide sponsorship, again, like I said, for that, that pride building, um, but just through a different connection. And I think that a lot of those things that are coming through the grant lately, or that may be coming through the grant. I think we may want to actually review the grant program and consider what those things could be. Because again, even to me, the, uh, the basketball one, to me, that is again, a sponsorship. It's not about necessarily, it's, it's, it just doesn't fit for me. And so that's where I'd like to also consider looking at the grant outside of this as well, or the program as well. So I will ask if anyone would like to speak to the amendment.
Well, I have a question on the amendment.
Yeah.
Thank you. So Christie, you were just mentioning that, um, council, the council can't actually sponsor things. Can you just speak to that a little bit more?
I, I don't know about sponsorship. I know there's a policy that prohibits donations.
Oh, donations, okay, sorry, thank you. That's a question.
Yeah, if I could, I, yeah, and I, I feel very strongly that sponsorship is different than donation. Sponsorship, I, in, in my mind implies that there's sort of a reciprocal, um, that they are bringing recognition to our community. That they are gifting us with something that the town offers. And, and in recognition of that, we provide some sponsorship. And I, I, um, I hope I'm not wrong in the way I perceive that, but.
That, that would be.
I would like to perceive, you know, I would like to receive with that understanding.
That, that is my understanding as well. Donation is very much like, here you go.
Yeah, and that would be the, unfortunately, that would be the funds to the other basketball team, right? The, the, the team that's forward to the community.
Yeah. So would anybody else like to speak to the, the amendment that I proposed? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, I oppose to, to the amendment, um, for, for changing it through to general reserves from the grant, um, program. And one of those reasons is because we have a, um, we have a community grant program, we don't have a sponsorship program. Um, and so they, this group has went through the effort of applying where they thought they might be able to follow and, and get money. They spoke to, who they needed to spoke to, there was a recommendation made, um, it's a small amount of money. While, while I can understand what you're saying about sponsorship, again, um, I think that this is what we have and it, it could fit within this. Especially that the team is, is a local team. And so it is very much community here, um, just that they're, they're traveling to an event. Again, it's, it's, it's five hundred dollars. We've talked about this grant program and, you know, could we potentially adjust it in the future? And yes, that's certainly a possibility. I know that it's recently come up for, didn't it just recently come up for, um, relooking at, anyway. But, but, but for me, for right now, I don't think that the amendment is necessary. And it should go through the Neighborhood Micro Grant Program.
Would anybody else like to speak to this? The amendment? If not, um, I will close. Again, for me, this is about, this is about the precedent, um, and looking at into the future of what this is. To me, again, it's just not a bit. Not saying I don't want to fund them and provide them with that money, because I absolutely do. But I believe that, that this should be coming from the right thing if we're looking at our policies and wanting to actually follow them. I think that this does a bit. So I will call the questions, um, all in favor for the, the change, or the, the proposed amendment? Opposed? The motion is carried. So the motion has now been updated to, um, so it's been moved. That the Culvers, um, High School be granted five hundred dollars through sponsorship from general reserves to support the senior girls' basketball team with travel. Expenses, um, to a provincial basketball tournament in Olds slash Ditzbury. Would anybody like to, to speak to the amended motion? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for, um, for putting this motion for the amendment. So I guess when, when we talk about precedent and precedent for funding streams. For me, that the way this is written is that anybody can apply through, for sponsorship through general reserves. And it would be very much given on how council is feeling around the table. Because again, we don't have a, um, sponsorship or a donation, um, policy or bylaw. But what we do have is a community grant, um, program and, and policy and supporting documents. And so, um, when we talk about precedent, I actually think that it's, it's worse to just award people money from, um, a, a reserve. Rather than attempt to go through a program that would fit better. And so for that reason, I, I, um. I would be opposed to this.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to, um, explore this, this motion. I think that when we have a group of high school, uh, youth that have worked hard enough to go to the, uh. To a provincial tournament, that they are a little bit unique. We don't have that happen often and I think we need to recognize and approve it. Precedence is really important. I think that if people want to strive to do great things, to bring recognition to our community. I'm always going to be on the side of sponsoring them. I think that when we look at precedence in terms of our community grant program. We really, really worked hard to make sure that the community understands that you're going to do things for our community. If you're going to do an event to sort of just to, to build community. We want to support that with this grant dollars. Our uptake is growing and it's not always growing in the best ways. It's, it's growing sometimes with, with requests that we think are great, but they don't fit within that, that grant program. So maybe we need to look at different kinds of grant programs. But I, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with just granting funds from that. When we know that we want to use that money to encourage people to grow our community. And so I am, I am, um, I am happy to support the motion as it stands.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm happy to support getting the funds to the team. I think they're doing a great thing, you know, it's a town that showing our support for them is great. I do believe currently that the Neighborhood Connections Micro Grant is probably the best policy in place as of this moment. For navigating, transferring their funds that way. So that's why I was kind of opposed to general reserves. That being said, maybe we have to look at, you know, a sponsorship policy and create that for future, um, instances where something like this might come up. But I'm fully in support in making sure that they are funded. And I would like to see it kind of go through the silos that are here right now. And with the grant program, if it's not a hundred percent fit, maybe we have to look at amending that. Whether that is changing this one or creating a sponsorship policy in addition to that. Or having an aside, you know, in there about sponsorships.
Great, thank you. Um, any further discussion? All right, um, so I, I guess, Larry, I have a question. So if, if Councillor Florence, or Deputy Mayor Florence made the original motion and then it was amended. Who actually made the motion at that point in time if it's been amended? Like who's the motion person?
The main motion still, the original mover.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, so it was moved by Deputy Mayor Florence that Culvers High School be granted five hundred dollars through the sponsorship from general reserves to support the senior girls' basketball team with traveling expenses to a provincial basketball tournament in Old slash Didsburg. Um, I will call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Uh, the motion is carried. All right. Um, I would actually, um, now that we've, we've done that, I thi- I would like to make a motion, um, to direct administration to review the community grant program and consider either adding, like, consider the sponsorship aspect, um, whether that be included within it or not. But to bring back an RFD, um, for that, that was really bad.
That was not pretty, Larry, I don't know about that.
You were very, very sensitive.
I know.
We, we knew your intent, so that's not what you actually said.
I know, as I was saying, this isn't going where I wanted it to go.
Into the, sorry for the right, uh, justification, the meaning and my intent of the policy.
Uh, yes, to, to review the community grant program and consider, um, I'm just, we're just gonna take another quick recess of our own, okay? Just so that we can get this written here, um, the way that I'm intending it to. I'm just gonna write this really quick.
Thank you. So I'm moving that Council directs administration to review the community grant program criteria and consider refinements as some recent requests may fit better as sponsorships and bring forward post sponsorship policy for council's consideration. Any questions on the motion? That took a long time to put together, so thank you. So I have made this motion. Again, I think that I love that our community is seeking out the opportunity to take advantage of the grants that we have put forward. I think it's really great. However, I do want to ensure that we are considering the types of requests that we are receiving and looking at them appropriately rather than trying to just fit everything into something. And so in my mind, I think that we need to consider this because some of the things like as is worded, maybe better called something different. And so for some, this may be just, this may just be a little bit of a, you know, what do we say, six, what was that, was it six?
Sixty-five.
Yeah, there we go. It might be that, but for me, this is important just to help with setting precedent as to what we actually fund and how we actually choose to do that. And so that is why I wanted to bring this forward. I will ask if anyone would like to speak to this. If not, I have made this motion. I will follow the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Alright, so we're moving on now to closed session, I believe. And so with that, can I get a motion to go into closed session, please?
Sure. I move that council move into a closed session to discuss two updates on agreements in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, Section 16, disclosure harmful to business interests of the third party in Section 1, here is Section 21, disclosure harmful to intergovernmental relations, and for a CAO update in accordance with Section 24, advice from officials of the act, and for a personnel matter in accordance with Section 24.
Thank you. Call question. All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Go ahead.
Great, so I'm just going to let me go back into open session at 8:53 pm. We'll call the question levels in favor. I'm going to ask for a motion to extend the meeting until 9:15, please.
I can read that motion.
Great, thank you. Councilor Collins made the motion, we'll call the question, all those in favor? That is carried. And then can I get a motion to go back into closed session, please? To discuss personnel, which I believe is section 24 of White...
Sure, I'm glad you said that. Enter a closed session to discuss the personnel matter under section number 24.
Excellent. All of the question, all those in favor? That's carried.
We will call the meeting or go back into open session at 9:53 p.m. I'll make that motion. Call question, all those in favor? That is carried.